...described as the south half of lot six, block seventeen of the South Park addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as six-six-two through six-six-four, South Ninth Street. The planning commission directed that this application be converted from an R-three to a PDD at the last meeting to allow a binding site plan to be considered as part of the rezoning request. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application, as you noted, that was filed by Dennis Collier, who's the owner of a property on South Ninth Street. The request that we discussed with him initially, the concept was to tear down an existing dwelling that existed just north of the Bachover Plumbing business and to build back a five-plex apartment building in its place, based on the historic use as a multi-unit property. And this lot, as you recall, is pretty narrow. It's only fifty feet wide. It's unusually deep, though, two-hundred feet deep, and would accommodate a thirty-foot-wide by hundred-foot-deep building that was being discussed. Planning Commission had a hearing on this on February sixteenth, two thousand and ten, and he looked at a concept plan for the property, and the concept was a two-story apartment building, entrances that would face south towards a sidewalk. The building location at the time was thirty feet from Ninth Street and had setbacks of twelve feet on the south and eight feet on the north, and the plan at the time had two spaces in front along Ninth Street and eight new paved spaces back in the alley. After the staff report and after presentation from the applicant's contractor, Darrell Dunn, and there were some comments from neighboring property owners, the commission voted eight to zero to direct the applicant to amend the application from R-three to a planned development district. And what that means for zoning purposes is that the planned development district requires that a site plan that the planning commission agrees with and building elevations be submitted, and the construction on the property has to be consistent with those plans that were presented to you. The other advantage for the applicant is the planned development district allows the commission to vary or adjust certain requirements like building setbacks. In this particular case, the planning commission said you'd like to see building elevations of what the Ninth Street side of the building would look like. What sort of screening was proposed along the south property line between the building and Bachover Plumbing? And there was also concern about both the condition of the alley in the rear from a traffic standpoint, but also there'd been some identified drainage issues in that area. You have at your place an email that staff received from a owner nearby. He states that he wanted to be sure the commission knows that you cannot drain anything to the alley without flooding the backyards of the properties along Ninth Street. The alley is built up too high at the Crawford Street, extending almost to Charles Street. The problem's been worse since the Crawford Street widening and reconstruction. He said he knows this was brought up at the meeting, but he feels it's very important for the property owners on the west side of the alley. He's not opposed to the project. He doesn't want to see the drainage problem magnified after he builds. And so we had some discussion with Mr. Stack about that, and we'll get into that as I discuss the amended plan. John, do you have the site plan that was submitted that is the different plan? And I don't know if it's possible to... We've got this all in one picture, the top being the site plan, the bottom being at the left-hand side what it would look like from Bachover Plumbing, and on the lower right is what it would look like from Ninth Street. But the amended plan shifts the building forty-one feet to the west. The main parking area is shifted from the alley side to the Ninth Street side, and then there's four supplemental spaces shown on the rear alley side. You've also got an elevation drawing, again, that depicts what the building would look like on the Ninth Street side. As we indicated, the concern about having the eight spaces in the alley was both traffic-related because of the condition of the alley and drainage-related, and I might let Mr. Stack weigh in here. We had some discussions about some ideas for improving what needs to be done in that alley, but I think his conclusion was that at the last, it drains and slopes down to Crawford, but the problem's getting it there.
Right. Yeah, we looked at it, and it's really built up, so we concur with our findings that it doesn't drain very well, and don't know how long it's been that way, but it just needs to be regraded and possibly some material even removed. It's kind of, over the years, been humped up with gravel and sand, and it's extremely high and thus doesn't allow water to drain at all at this point, and just needs to be redone. So if that's a... Basically, the city probably needs to, I think, take care of that, Dean, unless there's some reason to...
Yeah, I think there was... There was some concern, I think, most of the neighbors that I've conversed with weren't concerned about the project. They just wanted the city to be aware of a drainage problem back there that they didn't want to see aggravated.
Yep, and we can work with... Once he figures out his... Kind of where the water's going to drain, we can make sure it gets to Crawford, gets to the right location.
That seems like a fairly easy thing to take care of, is...
Yeah, it's just a really motor grader, so it's interesting that that's never been brought up before.
You're not adding any material, you're just taking material away, right?
Correct. Yeah, it's surprising it's never been brought up before, so it's definitely an issue, and this project brought it to light, and we need to just get a motor grader in there and fix it. So I don't... Any reason we shouldn't be able to do that?
That's why we send these letters out, to solicit feedback, and that's the feedback we got, so...
Okay.
I guess they'd never been asked before, so now they're telling us. As far as the plan itself, we kind of walked through how it addressed the various zoning requirements. You've got twelve and eight-foot setback on the north, twenty-nine feet at the rear, seventy-one feet at the front now instead of thirty. The dimensions of the lot haven't changed. The density fits within the R-three limitations. You would have thirty percent lot coverage if this was approved. I think the main thing we identified was landscaping-related, and that's primarily because we just lacked detail. The two things that we would bring to note is that in a standard setting, you would try to get a fifteen-foot yard area or buffer between this apartment and single-family to the north. There's really only eight feet to work with here, so we would need to come up with the best plan we can. Some of that would depend, is that these do look like perhaps balconies or walkouts, and so those will extend out even more. We don't have the photos with you, but if you'll recall, the reserves at Prairie Glen down on South Ohio, they've got walkout patios and balconies on the back, and those are about eight or ten feet from a large evergreen screen or row between them and the First Southern Baptist Church. That's one option. Fencing is another option. The other thing is that this, based on this plan, this is the only area available for any kind of front yard landscaping. And again, when you're dealing with a lot that's fifty feet wide and you have a twenty-five-foot driveway, that takes care of half your front yard. So there are some site constraints here that need to be worked with. I think we kind of walked through what the character of the neighborhood was historically, and this is kind of a transition lot between the commercial to the south and single-family farther north. It does abut a very heavily-traveled street and existing commercial, and those types of conditions are identified in the comprehensive plan as being appropriate locations for transitional housing between commercial and single-family. So I think we've summarized pretty well from the elevations that it's going to be an attractive building, two stories. We indicated in our report, we weren't sure about two- or three-bedroom units, and we found a floor plan that was submitted earlier for the second floor, and it did seem to indicate that on the second floor, there would be three apartment units, but we'll let the applicant clarify that. They've got twelve parking spaces total, two per unit, and then two available for guests and visitors. They've done a good job on the layout in front by providing this little pull-out right here, so you can back out, and these are all designed in a way that if you park here, you can head out into Ninth Street, so nobody will be backing out into Ninth Street. All the dimensions there met our requirements. These will just be accessed off the alley right here. So I think what we'll focus on is how this relates to what's around it, and that's primarily looking at landscaping and screening. In order to have a compliant landscape plan, they'd need to have some low-growing shrubs along here to screen the parking area, and at least two tree units in this area. There's probably different ideas for buffering and screening on the north. And then the final item, which could be addressed depending on how you feel about it as a commission, is you've got a business owner to the south. Normally, it's the obligation of the business owner to provide screening, but if screening already exists, then the business doesn't have to double that up. And in this case, there was some discussion that you felt that because Bachover Plumbing had been there for that extended period of time, that if there were screening done, it should be done by this development and not by Bachover. So the other thing I would note is we don't have any trash dumpsters or signs or outdoor lighting identified on the plan, and we would like some clarification on that. But your options would be to recommend approval of the plan as requested, and this would include a variation of the fifteen-foot buffer on the north down to eight feet. You could recommend approval of the plan, subject to certain revisions, such as shifting the building or increasing a buffer area or adding parking. You could table this if you think you need additional information from the applicant or that there are still major revisions to be made, or you could deny the request altogether. On page nine there, we've kind of outlined a possible recommended conditions, which would be, I think, the one that we would pull out from the plans, that the R-three has a seventy-five-foot height limit because of the allowance for Johnstown Towers and Oakdale Plaza and things like that. We think that thirty-five feet is more in keeping with the neighborhood. And then we would ask the applicant to submit details about signage, site lighting, dumpster enclosures, things on a final plan that came with the building permit. But I think we would want to focus any discussion on ideas for buffering the eight feet on the north, whether you think a fence should be required along the south, abutting Bachovers, and any thoughts you have about pinning down dumpster enclosures or locations at this point in time. So with that, I'll be open to any questions. We did re-notify the same area that was notified the first time and provided them with the revised plan, and so they were... This is a public hearing for that purpose.
Any questions of staff? Okay, would the applicant care to address the commission?
Darrell Dunn, twelve-seventy-three Aspen Road. I'll answer any questions that you have, if that's my ability. What we're needing to do is find out if we can get the rezoning or the PDD before we can put final budget numbers and final plans together to submit.
The dumpster location that Dean had talked about is that... Do you anticipate that being in the back? Is that where the trash is picked up now? And what about the screening on the area between you and the Bachover property?
I think I would recommend fencing to screen that off.
I guess I think that the point is, is whether it is your responsibility or his responsibility. I think the commission kind of felt like it was, since you were doing the bulk of the improvement there, that that would be your responsibility. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I don't... There's not a problem with that.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. We would hear from members of the audience at this time regarding this application. Again, anyone want to address this application from the audience? Okay, none being seen. Any further questions of staff or discussion?
Well, I would just point out, we do have that letter from Marlene again. I know she came and spoke the first time. She's a little concerned about her property value increasing. This not being a like property, I don't think is really going to have much of an effect on her. Only thing I could see is, as this is an improvement to the neighborhood, perhaps some of the other houses around may choose to start improving themselves, and that may as a side result, but I think it's a good result for the neighborhood if people see a new... It just happens. You build new properties and people start fixing their property up, so hopefully it does have a positive effect, and I think any effect of her financially would be pretty negligible. I just want to address that issue since it wasn't her letter to us, so... And I think the flooding issue's been kind of addressed. I think it's good that we've discovered that.
Yeah. I'd see that as a total win-win for the neighbors and the applicant. You know, if the city can get that alley graded to the proper grade where that drains correctly, I see that as a benefit for everyone. So many of these things don't come to light, you know, until you get an application like this, so this has been a benefit. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
I would accept a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve application PDD ten-point-one as per recommended by staff with the staff recommendations as noted in the packet.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to approve application PDD ten-dash-one with the staff recommendations, the two staff recommendations on page nine.
In our interpretation, that, based on your input, would include the responsibility for the fencing along the south property line.
And can the dumpster issue be handled administratively?
We would work... I would agree with Mr. Dunn that, and the way we've structured this is that they get their zoning in place, they finalize their design, and then when they're ready to build, we'll work with them on a dumpster location.
Sounds great. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Thank you. All right, the next application is application SUP ten-dash-one filed by Dan Parcell on behalf of Cow Valley Greenhouses, requesting approval of a special use permit to allow seasonal open-air market and retail garden center to be established on the former Ponderosa Restaurant site, a one-point-zero-eight acre tract of land located in the west one-half of the southwest quarter of section thirty-six, township thirteen, south range three, west side of six, Principal Meridian in the Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as two-hundred East Diamond Drive. Dean?
That long description means it's not platted. So Mr. Hirst has worked with Cow Valley on this, and he'll be presenting this report.
Just to keep the background brief, the story with the history of temporary use and special use permits goes back to nineteen eighty-nine, in which an ordinance was adopted for temporary use permits to be issued with the blessing of the zoning administrator administratively. And that continued till two thousand and three, at which point it was decided, after several instances where open-air markets, such as farmers' markets and other temporary uses similar to this, were having impacts on their neighbors, that maybe we should look at having a public forum in which these types of uses would then go before the planning commission to become adopted and have public input and input from the planning commission with conditions of approval. We have a few examples, I'm sure, as most of you remember, dealing with the Stutzman's greenhouse. It's a very similar project, very similar special use permit to this, as well as the farmers' market that we have on Ohio Street at Water's True Value. And to this application, the applicant is Dan Parcell on behalf of Cow Valley Greenhouses out of Manhattan, Kansas, and they've been searching for a place to do a open-air market. They were located on the South Dillons there for a while, and they're looking for a new place to relocate, which brings them to this application here. They're wanting to operate from April through July and have a shade structure of a temporary nature of twenty feet by forty feet and a quonset of twenty-five by forty-eight feet. As mentioned earlier, the site is up here, is the former Ponderosa Steakhouse, north of the interstate and just east of North Ninth Street. Along with the proposed dates, the times in which the applicant is proposing to operate varies greatly depending on the day, from nine a.m. to seven p.m. on Monday through Thursday, nine a.m. to eight p.m. on Friday, eight a.m. to eight p.m. on Saturdays, and eight a.m. to six p.m. on Sundays. The operation would be directed locally by a local resident that would be hired by Cow Valley Greenhouses. All of the money generated would be removed from the site every night, and all of the valuable possessions that would be left behind would be locked inside the quonset for safe keeping throughout the evening. No music is being proposed or any other noise or sound-making devices of any kind. And after the commencement and ending of the proposed special use permit, the applicant is proposing to completely remove all of the structures and everything that they would bring to the site when the special use is completed. They have a... The applicant has a somewhat unique and creative, but yet simple, delivery and display system set up, and what they do is they set up cinder blocks. As you can see here, there's cinder blocks set up along with some timbers to make the perimeter of the display area, and inside what they do is, on top of those cinder blocks, they'll just put the pallets of inventory that they bring in daily from Manhattan. They'll put that pallet on top of the cinder blocks, and then they'll wrap the cinder... Or the pallets in a plastic covering, a decorative covering, and once that pallet is emptied and all the inventory is sold, it is then removed from the cinder blocks, and therefore there's nothing there at that spot, and gets shipped the next day back to Manhattan when the new inventory delivery truck comes. Additionally, along with the pallets, they also remove refuse of trash in the same manner in which the inventory truck comes from Manhattan. The inventory and pallets are unloaded from the truck and put on display. The old pallets are loaded up on the truck along with the trash and hauled back to Manhattan. So that's kind of how their operations work from the delivery and display side. For signage, they're not asking for much signage at this point. They are proposing a three-foot-by-ten-foot banner sign that would be affixed to the shade structure, and a small three-foot-by-five-foot A-frame reader board to advertise daily specials on what it is that they're highlighting to sell at that point in time to their customers. The location is located on a low-intensity traffic street in Diamond Drive, even though it is in proximity to a very high-traffic intersection in the interstate and Ninth Street corridor area. That is a signalized section, and staff doesn't see much problem with the access coming off of Diamond Drive. Similarly, the parking is adequate. For the display area of a little under ten thousand square feet, nine thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet, the applicant would be required to have thirty-nine parking spaces. The site plan that they propose has forty-one, so staff doesn't see an issue there. With the utilities, the applicant is proposing to bring on porta-potties onto the site for restroom and sanitary services, and for their electrical services, they are planning on using the electrical provided to the building of the former Ponderosa Steakhouse there. The biggest question that staff would have is an incomplete understanding of the water and how that would be supplied to the site, and the applicant can speak to that later. But as of now, our understanding is that they would be having water supplied to them from the neighboring property to the west, the hotel there, and we would just like some clarification on how that would work and some of the details behind that. For liability, the applicant's company carries a comprehensive insurance for bodily and personal injury, so the insurance is covered there. I guess the staff's comments would be that this is a commercial corridor that is primarily commercial, with the exception of some industrial activity in the Grain Belt facility on the north side of Diamond Drive, and the proposed use is in keeping with the zoning and the other activities in the area. And again, our only concern would maybe be the water and how that situation is going to work with the neighbors, so we'd just like some clarification there. The alternatives, the special use permit could be approved as it is submitted by the applicant. It could be approved with special conditions of some kind placed on it by the commission. It could be tabled if more information is needed, or it could be denied if the board does not feel like the use fits the area or there is some incompleteness to the applicant's proposal. The things that the staff... The items that the staff would like the commission to look at specifically in reviewing in the special use permit are the dates and hours of the operation, what kind of noise would be generated from the particular use proposed, whether or not the site has adequate utilities. The removal of trash has been addressed, but that's something that needs to be looked at. And the last item that needs to be weighed is the parking and traffic impacts that the special use permit would have on the area. We would have any questions?
Any questions of staff? Okay, would the applicant care to address the commission? Name and address, please.
Dan Parcell with Cow Valley Greenhouses from Manhattan. We have been trying to return to Salina ever since Dillons built their gas station and took our space away, and now we have broken with Dillons and are establishing our independent locations all over the Kansas area. And in fact, we will have forty-six stores in Kansas, Nebraska, and Missouri. So we've got quite a bit of experience in being a good neighbor and being an asset to the community.
Great. Would you care to address the water, how you're going to deliver water to the site?
Yes. The Howard Johnsons next door has agreed to allow us to use the... There is a hydrant right on the end of their building, and we would just run a hose over. Our water use is lower than you might think, at around three thousand gallons a month.
The building is for sale. What would happen if it's sold while you guys...
We have written into the lease that we will vacate on short notice, and in fact, we will only be there until the end of June, and so even if it should be sold, I don't think anything would happen until then.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. Is there any member from the audience that would like to comment on this application? Any further discussion or questions of staff? You appear to be ready to...
Yeah, if we've got nothing, I'll make a motion that will approve that. I'll have to steal his notes over here, so I can see what we're even approving here. Based on your staff recommendations, the water issue's been addressed, so I'd move that we'd approve application SUP ten-dash-one.
With the four staff recommendations?
Yeah, with the four... Sure.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve application SUP ten-dash-one with the four staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Welcome to town.
Easy one.
We're welcome back to town.
Yes.
Welcome back to town. Welcome back to town.
Yeah. Enough green space around.
Yeah, there's enough green space. That's right.
Okay. Item number four is an administrative item. Application PO-8-6A filed by Magnolia Development Partners, Premier Properties LLC and Comco Inc. requesting approval for a final plat of Magnolia Commons Edition, a proposed four-acre lot subdivision of the 40-acre tract of land located in the southwest corner of Magnolia Road and I-135 in the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are at the southwest corner of Magnolia and Interstate 135, and this is a final plat application, the final piece of the puzzle, so to speak. You had previously, in March, looked at a plat of the Premier Edition, which is the little notch right here that's owned by Darrell Hills. And this, these two items have been going back and forth ahead of each other and behind each other, and now we're going to get them. So they're all on the same track and working in unison here on the same timetable. But the reason that we identify three owners here, the Magnolia Development Partners, Premier Properties, and Comco of Kansas, Inc., is because they are, the three of them partnering and cooperating on the development of this and the dedication of right-of-way for Virginia Drive. And back on November 4th, 2008, you looked at a preliminary plat of this property, and at the time, there were conditions placed on approval of the preliminary plat, and that was before the final plat came back to you, that the city engineer would complete a review of the drainage, or the traffic study done for this property. And that study concluded that no traffic signal was going to be warranted at Virginia Drive and Magnolia Road, and you've got a letter attached to the packet that confirms that. There was also the need for a final confirmation from the city engineer that the proposed detention pond design would, one, accommodate the anticipated runoff, and, two, fit within the area set aside on the plat. Also, a permit from KDOT to discharge the pond into the I-135 right-of-way was needed, and that has been obtained at this time also. We do want to pin down at some point in time, hopefully before any lots are sold, who's going to own the pond and how it's going to be maintained for the long term. Many times, that's done by an association of owners or as a common area for the benefit of all the owners who share in the maintenance. There was discussion at that meeting at the time, the plan that was before, the planning commission did not have a cul-de-sac turnaround on Virginia Court. The final plat does. And fifth item was that the developer should obtain a off-site utility easement from Comco Inc. south of lots three and four to allow for extension of utilities east of Virginia Drive. And that is being worked on with Comco, Inc. at this time, and we'll go into that in a little bit of detail here later. But what this plat proposes is to plat as public right-of-way a new street, which would be Virginia Drive, which would extend south of Magnolia, and that would provide all internal traffic movement and circulation. And all the lots in this subdivision would get their access from this street and also from Virginia Court. And all of the lots would have access from them except for Lot 3, which is down here in this corner. And so the public street would terminate here. This is designed to be a shared north-south private access road. And the best example I could give that would be comparable would be when you're going west of Ninth Street on Belmont Boulevard. It actually terminates at Planet Avenue there, and that road that continues on to Goodwill and the motel and all these is actually a privately-owned, shared road for all those businesses and is not actually Belmont Boulevard. So what they're proposing is that the public street system stops here, Lot 3 starts here, doesn't have frontage, but it would have access through a road that would be built right here that would not be a public street. And then the long-term plan for Virginia Drive and why it's named Virginia Drive is we're being optimistic that someday it'll be extended and go all the way south to tie into the original Virginia Drive, which extends north of Schilling Road out there by Casey's. So the other item we'd point out that there is a cul-de-sac right here at the terminate of Virginia Drive, and we're calling that a temporary cul-de-sac. So we don't know what period of time that will be, but the plan is that that's not a permanent dead-end street, that at some time that would be extended, the cul-de-sac turnaround would come out, and Virginia Drive would extend on. As part of the plan, there are two variances that are being requested. I pointed out, one, the maximum length of a dead-end street in the subdivision regulations is 600 feet. This street is 960 feet long. And the other exception or waiver they're requesting is, again, we require in the subdivision regulations that all lots have frontage on and access to a public street. They're requesting a variance to that requirement to allow Lot 3 to be served by the private north-south access easement. And so I think if you look at this interstate being here, the ponding arrangement, there aren't really a lot of alternatives to having that street terminate where it does. If you terminate it here at 600 feet, it's not going to fully serve Menard's parking lot or tie to this north-south alignment here. So the 960 feet is really necessary to get that to function the way it should, and it's not like you can build a bridge back across the interstate or something, and there's nothing for it to loop to or extend to, so it really needs to be a dead-end street. And we think that as long as maintenance responsibilities are clearly established and recorded for the benefit of this lot, then we don't have to be concerned about nobody buying it or developing it because they're concerned about not being able to get access to it. So I see Mr. Nelson has arrived, and he can probably help me with the layout of the utility system. And I don't know, John, do we have anything in your package that, I see you only got six items there. Do you have anything in the way of a aerial photo or something that we can zoom out to? And perhaps that goes back to the November 4th, 2008 timeframe? And I guess if you just go to that aerial photo there, okay, I will, I'll let Mr. Nelson describe or give additional detail about what is being planned here, but if I'm correct, Wayne, the plan is to start over, if you could zoom back out, John? We're starting here, and the plan is a 12-inch water line?
Right. Actually, there'd be a 12-inch water line that would be tying on to Centennial Road.
All the way to Centennial?
And it's a 10-inch line on Centennial, tie on and bring a 12-inch line east, more or less paralleling Magnolia Road, back to the point where Virginia Drive will be built. And then south, all the way down to that parcel line, and then back west again, completing the loop back on Centennial. That'll all be a 12-inch water line. In addition to that 12-inch line, there'll be a 10-inch line that will be built up through the Virginia Court as part of our project that the city will build, will be building. We'll build approximately, just shy of 1,000 feet, a 10-inch line going down Virginia Court. And then Menard's has agreed or insisted on building the remainder of that loop back south, and then it'll tie in at the end of the, at the south boundary of their property, completing the loop for their fire protection. In addition to the water improvements, there will be sanitary sewer improvements, which will start right there where Mr. Andrews is indicating at the intersection of Virginia Drive and Magnolia Road. That line will go south, all the way down to the adjoining subdivision, and then west where a lift station, new lift station number 47, will be built. Lift station number 47, new number 47, will replace existing lift station number 47, which services a small residential area north of Schilling Road.
Just for the benefit of the commission, sometimes you don't see how all these things tie together, but there's a system that starts right here. Is that correct, Wayne? That collects?
There is a, yes, there is a large lift station there.
And so it's basically, we call it an interceptor, but it's taking everything from the airport, taking it around the city. It actually goes down Magnolia Road by the First Covenant Church, out on Holmes Road, and all the way back to the sewer treatment plant. So this is the beginning of the system here. It runs along Sam's Club and that area through there and over to Ohio and east of Ohio. So this is the beginning of that system. But as I understand it, when this, all these improvements are complete, all of the lots in Magnolia Commons and also Mr. Hill's Premier Edition will be developable without any additional work?
That would be correct. And then the property north of Magnolia Road would have the opportunity to have sanitary service extended under Magnolia to service that property.
And then I'm going to ask Mr. Stack to explain the drainage and how that will work here. On an earlier plan that we reviewed for this property, the plan was to do detention over in this area and then discharge the pond right over here to Dry Creek. But this is a little more convoluted than that, isn't it, Dan? Where the, if you visualize here, there'll be a pond about right here?
Yes.
And then we're going to discharge here?
Correct.
And then take the water, there's an existing ditch here, and come back to the west Dry Creek at that location. And so the discharging of the pond onto KDOT right-of-way is what required the KDOT discharge permit. And as we indicated, we'll get that pinned down with the developer as far as the maintenance and ownership of that pond and who will have that responsibility. The West Star is planning to bring underground electric down, follow the water and sewer. They've got a line along the interstate here, and that existing line will serve a pump that will be installed in the detention pond. And the only thing that appears to go back and forth at this point in time is that this property does not have natural gas service, and it's either going to come from under the interstate this way or from Centennial Road this way. And I think the last we heard, Wayne, was that the natural gas was going to come from the west and follow the water?
That is the last information we had. That's about two weeks old now, so, but the last...
It's changed three times?
Yeah. The last time we heard, it was being considered being brought from Centennial Road, although they were still looking at the engineering and what it would take to bring it from Ninth Street under Interstate 135. So they're exploring.
And one of the reasons for the more abbreviated report in your packet and then the supplemental there is that even as late as the end of last week, we had some things that were changing and not quite pinned down, but I think the one thing that's not changing is the water and sewer plan and the easements and things of that nature. But as far as the right-of-way, this yellow line here represents the property line, and this stretch, 10 feet here is being dedicated by Mr. Hill's and Premier Properties, 10 feet here is being dedicated by Comco, and then the other 50 feet for Virginia Drive is coming out of the Magnolia Development Partners property. Over on this north-south access easement, it's 40 feet wide. West Star looked at that, and they looked at the water line, they looked at the width of the paving, and they requested that that be widened from 40 feet to 50 feet to give them a place to get their underground electric in. There is a 15-foot easement, and maybe you can go back to the plat, John? This is the 40-foot north-south access easement. That is going to get widened out to match this and be 10 feet wider. There's a 15-foot drainage and utility easement right here on this side of the line, and a 15-foot twin to that is proposed. South of that, that would be dedicated by Comco, and so the net result is we'd have 30 feet to work within there. 15 would be utility and drainage, and 15 would be utility only. And then I wanted to briefly talk about sidewalks. The expectation is that sidewalks would be built, starting at this point, down both sides of Virginia Drive and Virginia Court. And we do have an exemption for short cul-de-sac streets, but as Virginia Court is 960 feet long, it would not be exempt from the sidewalk requirement. So the expectation is that we would have sidewalks on both sides of that. And Dan or Wayne, do we know if the sidewalks would be built as part of the street or as sites develop?
At this point, they're being, as the site develops, they are not included in our project.
All right. And there is no phasing of the improvements per se. It all has to get built at once to make this work. And we'd also have, I guess if you could go back to the aerial photo again, John? As I understand it, Wayne, the Willarius property here and Premier Properties here and then this area here, those would be the special assessment area?
That is correct, Mr. Andrew.
Okay. And so all those properties benefit in some fashion from those improvements, and they are inside the city limits. Also wanted to mention, been working with the attorney for the owners here, that there was a $74,000 assessment that was assessed to this property as part of the benefit district for the Magnolia Interchange, and that is deferred right now, but that would, that deferral would terminate at the time that this plat is recorded. So that will also be an assessment that would come into play. Our recommendation is we now think this final plat is in order for your approval today. We would recommend approval of the two requested waivers, the one relating to the length of Virginia Court, the other allowing Lot 3 not to have frontage on a public street but to have frontage on a private access. frontage on a public street, but to have frontage on a private access road. John, it may be difficult to find, but on the November 20... Or number 4th, 2008, and the aerial number 10 there has a description of the intersection. And if that's going to be difficult to find, it would be under, I think, the plat. And it's number 10 within that item. But there will be improvements that are made to the Virginia Drive-Magnolia intersection. And so one of the conditions is the applicant would be responsible for making those improvements at that intersection. That sidewalks would be required on both sides of Virginia Drive and Virginia Court. That the developer's design engineer must submit final construction plans for the ponding area before a building permits issued for any of the lots, and that the pond would need to be completed in its construction before any property was occupied. We will need to get a maintenance agreement or covenants in place for the detention basin. And then I did not get in front of you the letter from the fire marshal, but one of the concerns, obviously, is that you're trying to build water and sewer lines and streets at the same time that Menard's is trying to build a store. And so there are certain things that Menard's can do on the site, and there are certain things they can't until they get operational water in place. And so the fire marshal has worked those out in a letter to Menard's of what they can do and they can't do without the water line system being in place. And then there are some notes that we're working with on the developer and with Menard's to get lettered on the final plat, and those would need to be made before we had a signature and recording. But this has been a pretty complex project, and it's multi-departmental and it's multi-property owner. But I don't know how many times Mr. Nelson's revised his estimates for the benefit district yet today, but that's kind of the way that this has gone. But I think we're getting it narrowed down to the point where there's no additional changes going to be made or allowed for, and we think the final plat is pinned down and ready for your action.
Any questions of staff? Would the... Any of the applicants care to address the commission?
We do have Mr. Hill's here, but he's not an active partner, but he is interested. This is certainly going to benefit his property to the west.
The only thing I'd like to share with you is, over the years, I've heard how difficult it is to get industries and new businesses to Salina because of the cities throws up roadblocks. And I've never found that to be true. And I think this is a great example of the city bending over backwards to meet a very accelerated schedule to get it done. And I appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else care to address the commission? Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Any discussion?
You know, I do have representatives of Wilson and Company here. If you have any technical questions about the system or the drainage or anything of that nature. I think Wilson Company's been in the same boat as us. They're revising and doing things in revised form just as we are. But again, this is a multi-dimensional project. As what you can't see or are not seeing here is all the easements and alignments and everything that have been taking place outside this plat, going back to Centennial Road. And those things have come together, but we certainly couldn't have done all that without the assistance of Wilson and Company as well.
I was going to add, Mr. Andrew, that Wilson and Company is under contract to the city of Salina, Menard's, and the developers to bring this all together.
Works well.
So they're representing three different groups.
In other words, they have a lot of people telling them what to do.
You know, I'd make a comment. I think it's really exciting to have some development of this nature on the west side of the interstate at a very important exit off of our interstate. I think it can only be beneficial to our community and an exciting project. So with that, I'd make a motion, we approve PO8-6A with the city recommendations as outlined by Mr. Andrews, and certainly including the fire marshal's request and honoring that letter of recommendation that they submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve application PO8-6A with the two waivers and the six staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Congratulations on staff and certainly all the landowners that made this happen. And of course, Wilson and Company, the engineering department. This was a multifaceted deal with lots of hurdles, and you guys have done a great job.
I would congratulate the commission on getting done before 6 o'clock. I think you made everybody happy, so we'll try to see if we can fix that in the future and get these stretched out for you.
There's not any other matters, aren't we?
Yeah, we have no other matters to stretch this out. So go out and enjoy the weather.
We are adjourned. Thank you.